Everybody seem to be ready. All right. Let's call the meeting door, if you would, please stand and we'll do the pledge and the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that's joy to hear, sir. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you once again for allowing us together on this important meeting, this important night. We thank you for these members, we thank for the community members, we thank you for our faculty and staff, and most of all, we thank for our kids. Lord, we thank for the students that make up Swain County school systems, what honor they bring us, what pleasure they bring us, what joy they bring us. We thank you for each and every one of them. We ask a special blessing be presented to each one and each family, be with us during this meeting, that everything that we talk about, everything that we discuss, everything that we decide, everything that's dictated, it would be in honor and glory, bring honor and glory to your precious holy name. Lord, we thank you once again for just the ability to be here. We thank for the health and strength, thank for your love and your mercy and your grace. Once again, be with us and go with us, and we ask all these things in your precious holy name. Amen.
Okay, if Mr. Jones will come up, please, and we're going to do an installation of new members. If the new members will go up there and join here, I guess.
I think they want their families to come up.
Whoever they want to be, that's fine. Families want to come up with them?
There's a school bus over there.
Well, that's fine. We have some school buses, we're good.
I'll read the oath. I'll just state you, and you state your name, and then I'll read your oath. If you'll place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. You state your name.
I, Lisa Marie Loftus.
Do solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carol- of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the Swain County Board of Elec- Board of Education to the best of your ability, so help you God. Congratulations.
I'd like to welcome the new members to the Board of Education. Lisa's one of the three now, didn't not teach, but RL's young enough to remember me in the classroom, I hope, and just found out he graduated from the old school, and I'd forgotten that, and so I won't say anything else on that. But, uh, but welcome to the Board of Education, and there's good times and bad times in it, but the good times is a lot of things that were happening like tonight with his kids, uh, makes your heart feel good when you leave here, and you'll find that out real quick. Uh, all right, Mr. Sale, I'll turn that over to you now for nominations.
Every year at this time, we are instructed by board policy to elect a new board chair, and so for that moment in time, I get to pretend that I'm, uh, in charge and take nominations for board chair for the coming, um, calendar year. So, the floor is open for nominations.
I'll nominate Mr. Cody White.
Cody White has been nominated.
I'll second that. Do you need a?
We would need a second. Are there any other nominations? With no other nominations, would all those in favor raise your right hand in support of Cody White as board chair for the coming year? Note that that, that passed four to zero with Cody abstaining. Okay, so, Mr. White, welcome. It's hard for me to call you that because all I can think of is your dad, uh, when I say that.
Oh, Lord.
Okay. I'll get used to it, though. So, welcome and congratulations. The remainder of the meeting is, uh, under your authority now, sir.
Thank you. Um, I guess, uh, we turn it back over to you for vice chair.
You get to do that.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the nominations for the 2023 Board of Elections Vice Chair.
I would nominate Mitch Carson.
I'll say.
With a vote and a second, all in favor of Mitch Carson as the vice chair, and cave rating right hand. Four to nothing with Mr. Carson abstaining.
Mr. White, um, I would suggest that we make one adjustment to the agenda tonight. If you will all look on the second page of the confidential agenda, uh, you will notice that there are B and C under discussion items, okay? Um, Mr. Brown of Boggs Crumpen Brown is traveling from a distance, and Stephanie has requested that we move the finance element up before the NC Star plans. So, finance with the budget audit report and the amendments would actually become, uh, B, and the NC Star plans would then become C. Uh, to my knowledge, that is the only adjustment to the agenda that you have in front of you that I think that we should make.
Any discussion in there?
That will need to be approved with a, a motion and a second, if acceptable.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the adjustment in tonight's agenda as moving, uh, finance to B and NC Star plans to C?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, my show of hands? Motion passes.
Every month, we, uh, once we get to about September, we enjoy, um, having our students and our schools represent those students who have high character, and I know that that's a difficult choice because we have so many, if not all, of our students that have high character. Um, and so, tonight Toby Merle is going to, um, take us through the list so that we can congratulate these students.
Let me give a couple of disclaimers as we get started. First of all, the high school will not have anyone tonight. Their person was away, and they would like to recognize them next month and due to. I told them that would be fine. So, we will only have, uh, four of our five schools tonight. We'll start with Bright Adventures Pre-K.
Hey, I'm Becky Perry, a teacher at Pre-K, um, and I have nominated, uh, me along with my assistant, Ms. Ledford. We nominated Chloe Byfield, um, for our Character Award, um, we nominated her, um, for her leadership in the classroom. Um, she always comes in in the morning with a big smile on her face, and she's ready to learn and ready to go. She loves to learn new things. Um, she also loves to be our little helper, so anybody that ever needs anything, um, she's always stepping up to want to help, and our, um, friends in our classroom always go to Chloe because they know that she will help and she is willing. Um, she works really hard, and she works towards her goals, um, and meets her wigs, and she gets her friends excited about meeting their goals as well. So, um, we wanted to nominate Chloe Byfield for our Character Award.
Next, East Elementary.
Hi, um, I'm Carrie Kirkland, and this is Kaye Dills, and I don't have him in the classroom. Um, that's Ms. Maddox, she's the lucky one, but I get to have him in after-school, so we wrote this together. Um, so, the first word that comes to our minds when we think of Kaye Dills is dependable. We can always depend on him to help when needed, do the right thing, and to give a hundred and ten percent to everything he does. He loves a challenge and has a great sense of humor. We could give you a million examples of why he deserves this award, but one of the things that stands out to us the most is how he interacts with others. Kaye treats every single person like they are important and is always considerate of others. He stands up for what is right even when it is difficult. Kaye is an excellent leader and role model in our school, and we can't wait to see the amazing things that he accomplishes in the future.
West Elementary.
Okay, I am Amber Griffin. I teach third grade at West Elementary, and I get a two-for-one special with both of my young girls here. Um, today I get the pleasure of introducing everyone to Alexis Young. Alexis is a phenomenal leader in person. She's polite, respectful, very caring. She goes out of her way to make everybody feel included no matter what we're doing. Alexis is compassionate and really loving with every person, and is a shining example of how everybody should be, no matter how old they are. She works hard every single day and never complains, and if you've heard anything about third grade, you know that that's not an easy feat for any child because third grade is a challenge. Um, she's grown in math and reading, and I know that I can always count on her no matter what. If I step out of the classroom, I know she's somebody that I can trust to tell me the truth and to help keep our classroom working like they're supposed to, and I look forward to watching her grow during the rest of the school year, and I'm really proud of her. She's doing great.
Before we get our last one of the night, uh, let me go ahead and put the disclaimer in that, uh, award recipients and family, you're free to go after this is over. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to. You're welcome to, but you don't have to. And lastly for us tonight is Swain Middle School.
Hey, I'm Ms. Barker. Um, I teach EC in the eighth grade, and we have nominated Areseli Laura. Um, Areseli is always on top of her work. Even when she's out of school, she emails her teachers. She lets us know when she's out, um, and she'll ask what she needs to work on. She then, in return, does that work, um, and turns it in. She's always asking what else she can do to make sure she stays on top of all her schoolwork. She is sweet and kind to her peers and tries to help anyone who needs it. She looks for others' needs and feels them when she can, um, and she follows the seven habits in everything she does and will do great things in her future.
That takes care of the, um, Character Awards. However, there are some other recognitions that we want to make in just a minute. Last week, I received a letter, uh, from Eric Davis. Uh, Eric Davis is the chairman of the State Board of Education for North Carolina. Uh, he writes to us, and especially to these two schools, uh, greetings from the Department of Public Instruction. I am pleased to offer my congratulations to you and your entire district for your school's performance during the 2021-22 school year. In close, you will find growth award certificates for what I know was a challenging year. Uh, within that letter, I have recognitions for Swain County High School, who achieved, um, all of the expectations for expected growth as a school in North Carolina. Now, without going into all the details about what that means, uh, there are different, uh, subcategories that are assessed, and there are different numbers that are used, and then there's a big program called, uh, EVAS that calculates all, all of those, and when it meets a particular, when those numbers meet a particular standard, a school is determined to either have met or not met the expected growth, uh, for that year. We don't get to set what those expected growth numbers are, and to be truthful, sometimes we don't know what they are until it is over because of the way that the process works. But I've asked Sonia to be here tonight so that we can present this award to her, uh, because of the outstanding work that the high school has accomplished in the past year. Sonia, would you come and accept this, please? While I sincerely do appreciate everything that the high school has done, and by the way, I see Ms., um, Sneed sitting back there, uh, our CTE scores are outpacing the rest of the state in a lot of areas, too. There's just a lot of wonderful stuff that's going on. Um, but I also especially wanted to draw attention to this, and I've spoken about this several times, and you know my passion, um, and I want to do my best to contain that. The other school that received expected growth last year was East Elementary. I want you to let that register for just a second. Was East Elementary, and yet, they were labeled as low-performing. If there ever was a flaw in a system, the flaw is that the state would highlight a school as low-performing and yet say they've met expected growth. To me, that's one of the most asinine things I have ever heard, and I don't care who repeats that. I don't care if the state hears that from me, because East Elementary is not a low-performing school, and in my book, neither is the middle school because they work so hard. So, Amanda, where are you? She didn't know she was going to have to do this, by the way. Thank you for letting me pontificate for just a minute. I got an email this morning, and, um, it made me smile because I learned that our Director of Technology is the Regional Technology Director of the Year. There are eight of those that are selected across the state, and so would you please help me congratulate Karen Cook, who is the heart and soul? I, I, I can't speak highly enough of the honor, the, the award that she's received. Uh, whenever you have a Regional Teacher of the Year, there's this huge celebration, and, and we celebrated Dr. Sutton when he was Regional Principal of the Year. Karen is, well, I just hope that you win state, but they don't make you go anywhere. Okay? Because I believe that you deserve that, that accolade. Uh, and at the same time, I think I can say this safely, our Teacher of the Year for Swain County was runner-up in the region this year. Um, and while I think that our, that the committee made a mistake and she should have been the Regional Teacher of the Year, we certainly celebrate Ms. Williams, uh, for all that she's done for our school system and for our students. Um, in my report to you today, I wanted to, to bring you up to speed on something that you may begin to hear about. Um, several years ago Volkswagen, um, was penalized by the federal government because of some decisions that they made, and they were forced to pay a substantial penalty. Part of that penalty was then turned around into some grant opportunities for different areas in, in the United States, and one of those is for an improved bus, school bus, performance. One of the buses that, that includes is an electric school bus. We've been watching electric school buses for a while. Uh, we've noticed that Cherokee, uh, Central Schools has at least one, um, and they are very pleased with it, and they have actually have others ordered, uh, to use. Uh, we have done some substantial research on concerns about, what about maintenance, uh, what about longevity, what about cost, and all of those things. And after we came, uh, to a conclusion that the electric bus is A, safe, B, has less working parts than a regular school bus. I was talking to someone today, one of our school buses has over two hundred working parts, moving parts. Um, an electric school bus has twenty. The brake system on an electric bus lasts, uh, much longer than a traditional school bus because the system of energizing and then recharging the batteries actually so- slows the vehicle down itself. Um, so, these vehicles charge themselves to a point. They hold themselves back when you slow down. They have tremendous torque, and they are safe. So, we took the opportunity this year to, uh, put our name in the hat with a grant for a no-cost bus replacement, an electric bus in place of one of our diesel buses at no cost to us. Uh, we were turned down by Volkswagen, but the state of North Carolina, DPI, um, put their name in the hat and were awarded several million dollars to purchase electric buses and then use a selection process across the school systems in North Carolina to see how they work, and we were selected for one of those. Now, I have no idea when the electric bus will be here because they're still, they're still trying to work out contract pieces between DPI and who they're going to purchase the buses from. That's, that puts us out in the, in the future. Meanwhile, we have, um, created a grant to Duke Power so that the charging station that will be needed for that will also be at no cost to the school system, and we have been selected for that grant as well. So, we're in a bit of a holding pattern right now, but I want you to know, if everything works the way that it can, and I believe should, there will be an electric school bus on our roads. The charging station will be at the high school. Uh, that's, that spot has already been chosen. We have looked at that with Duke Power to make sure that it will work well, and I am excited about the fact that we can help move our transportation system into the place where I believe it will be in the future. I believe that we will see the day when diesel-powered buses will become, um, nonexistent, although it may be twenty years down the road. Uh, it's coming. This lets us get in on the ground level. Do you have any questions about that? And if I don't have answers, I've got Kevin Almond on speed dial. He wrote the grant, he's got the answers right now. Any questions? We'll fill you in more, um, as the time approaches.
How long will one of these buses run, Mark, without being charged, without being recharged?
Um, I'm, I believe we're looking above a hundred and fifty miles, uh, so we can get probably two days out of our longest route, and we have to remember, RL, that they recharge when they're decelerating or going downhill, so that helps extend it. Okay? It's a good question, thank you.
You still looking at putting the charging station up at the high school?
Yes. At this point, I believe, we believe Mitch, that that is, that's the best central location for now. We looked at, uh, the elementary schools as well. Um, but that gives us the opportunity to move the bus around and see what it can do in different rounds. That's a good question. Anyone else? Um, I've received, uh, not, not a lot, but some phone calls and some concern, um, that there is, there has been, and I'm going to try to make this funny, so if you would laugh, it would make me feel better. Um, the smell of skunk wafting it through the air across East Elementary.
For medicinal purposes.
For medicinal purposes. Okay? Um, we chuckle about that, um, but it is true that at certain times of the day, particularly in the morning, there is a, a growing, I'm just using the word aroma, uh, that comes across the campus and is quite detectable. Um, we have done a little bit of research and understand that that aroma is coming from, uh, the medicinal farm that is on Cooper's Creek now. Um, there is not anything that we can do about that. I've reached out to Allison Cochran to see if there are any health concerns that anyone should be aware of, and at this point, I don't know of any. Mr., uh, Mr. Dills has done some research on his own. Um, I can't make that medicinal farm, we can't make that medicinal farm go away, uh, at this point. Um, we will have conversations with the tribe that owns the land, um, but I don't know how that will move forward in, in any different way than it is right now. But I needed to make a statement about that, and I needed for you all to know that in public, that we are, we're alert to it, we're working on it, but in a lot of ways, our hands are tied on that. Okay? Um, Lambert Wilson served as, uh, the, um, Board, School Board Appointment at Southwestern Community College on the Board of Directors for about ten years, um, and he moved to the point where he was Chairman of the Board for a number of years. Uh, with his death, uh, we need to replace that, and I've been contacted by Don Thomas, the President of SEC, who has asked that we, uh, give them a name. Uh, so, Mr. White, if, uh, the Board of Education tonight could select someone, um, I believe it will be a monthly meeting. There may be more, particularly as they engage in, uh, in activities, um, but we need to have someone from our school board sitting on their Board of Directors. So, um, if you could help take care of that, and if, if it's possible, if we could do that tonight, it would be helpful. Okay? We could do that during, uh, action items, if you want to. All right? Also, Mr. White, I would ask that, uh, you begin to work with this board, uh, to provide some, uh, representation on some ad hoc committees. Uh, Policy Number 2230 allows for you to do that, to appoint those. Um, I'm looking for a couple of people who could help go through board policies and look at policies with us as we begin to change them. We have some policies that we need to, uh, to work on and to, uh, update. Uh, we're beginning, or, yeah, we're in the beginning of strategic planning. I would like a couple of people who would work with me on a strategic plan, um, for our school system to lead us in to the next three years, and also I would like a person who would help me work at improving the parent and community engagement aspect of our school system. Uh, so, if, across the next month, if you could put a list together for me, and then we can make that announcement, um, and I have the instructions from the board policy there, uh, in my notes for you. Okay? Any questions about that? Anything? Okay. Uh, we're going to be hearing several NC, NC Star plans tonight. Um, east and west, um, excuse me, east and the middle school brought theirs last month. Uh, we need to hear from the remainder of the schools tonight. You should have documentation for those. Uh, the Central Office has also put a, a plan together. Um, we accomplished that after we looked at all of the other plans and determined how we could best serve and help, and I would like for you to hear. And I would like for you to hear about that as well. I had intended for that to be next, but we've shifted our agenda to finance. And so after finance, we'll listen to those NC Star plans. Okay? Before we move to that, are there any questions or any thoughts that you want to share with me before we move more into a business aspect? Anyone? Okay.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
On the aroma at East Elementary, if it proves to be harmful to the students, then there would be some...
I believe that, RL, I believe if, if that were true, that we would have more cause to create change. Okay? Again, I don't believe that we will find that there is. But if so, I believe, I believe we can take action of some sort. And, and I don't, I don't, I know this is live, and people are going to carry what I'm saying and what you're saying. And I don't want anyone on the tribe to think that any of us are standing against them or are out to force them to change. That's not the point. But we have a responsibility for the health and welfare of the students and staff at East Elementary. And so we have to look at that. Okay? Anything else? Mr. Brown, if you would come, and Ms. Tredway, thank you.
Chairman White, members of the Board, Superintendent Sale, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Robert Brown. I'm a partner with Boggs, Crump, and Brown for those of you that weren't here last year. So, and I am here to present the June 30, 2022 Audit Report. So with that, I'll go right into it. If you'll turn to page one. It's the, or page two. I really don't remember. On page one. It's the Independent Auditor's Report. Basically, this report right here covers your financials, all the financials in this report here. So with that, I'd like to start down here at the, basically the second paragraph from the last on the first page. It's the, it, it says responsibilities of management for the audit of the financial statements. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America and for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements. So what I'd like to do is go to top of page two. And this is the auditor's responsibility. Our objectives as auditors are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free of material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error, and to issue an auditor's report that includes our opinion. So with that, I'll go to the first page again where it says opinions. It says, "We have audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Swain County Board of Education as of and for the year-end in June 30, 2022, and the related notes to the financial statements, which collectively comprise the Swain County Board of Education's basic financial statements as listed in the table of contents." Then the second paragraph. "In our opinion, based upon our audit, the accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Swain County Board of Education as of June 30, 2022." So in other words, based on our audit, we had an unmodified opinion, which is good. So. So I won't read you this whole report. I mean, I'd pretty much be boring you to death by reading it. So what I'll do is, so if you, if you have any questions about anything in here after you have time to look over it, I know Stephanie, you know, can answer them, or she can get in touch with me to answer the questions. But what I'd like to do is go to pages 16 and 17 just to highlight some of the, the results financially this year for the Board. Page 16 is basically the statement of revenues expenditures and changes in the fund balance for the governmental funds. You know, governmental funds generally is general fund, state public school fund, federal grant fund, special revenue fund, capital outlay fund. So if you go to page 17, and it shows that, so, so typically, the way I look at it is you're looking at the general fund and the special revenue fund columns. Special revenues generally your impact eight dollars that are unrestricted. So I kind of look at those two together. So if you look at it, the beginning fund balance for those two combined was $5,112,005. You had an increase this year, which is revenues greater than expenditures of $141,620 for ending fund balance of $5,253,625. So it's a positive that there was an increase. Any questions? So I won't generally go over anything else on that. If there's no questions. So that covers the governmental funds. So if you go to page 77. 77 is basically the School Food Service Fund Schedule Revenues Expenditures. And this is basically on the modified accrual basis, just like the governmental funds. If you look kind of three-quarters of the way down, you can see that you had a, expenditures over revenues of $146,184 this year. As compared to last year, you had an increase of $262,049. I think a big part of that was reimbursement rates were higher during COVID. And also, in the prior years, you had 100% of the students were eligible for free meals. I think that was the big, big change for the year. So your federal reimbursements were down for the year. So, any questions with that? Okay. So what I want to do is go back to some more of our audit opinions. If you go to page 78, this gets more into our compliance section, part of our audit. So the first compliance opinion on page 78 is a, is a basically a report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards. So basically, this, this covers the internal control over the financial reporting, all the financial information before this, and any other compliance outside of your major federal and state grants. So on, on these reports, there's, there's always a report on internal control and a report on compliance. So the first report here, if you go to the bottom, I'll just go ahead and give you the results. During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider material weaknesses. So in our evaluation of internal control over financial reporting, we didn't identify anything that we consider material, a weakness. So. And then also, on the report on compliance and other matters, on page 79, if you look at the last, the first paragraph, last sentence, "The results of our test disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards." So in other words, everything's good in this report. Any questions? I know, I tried not to make this too boring. I won't read all this stuff.
You're doing well. Thank you.
So the next two on page 80, and the page 80, and the next one starts on 83. What I'll do first is I'll go to page 86 and 87. I'm sorry, I keep skipping around, but 86 and 87. If you look at the bottom of page 86, we identify the major federal programs that we audited, audited this year. So you can see we audited Title I and the Education Stabilization Fund. That was the two federal programs we audited as major this year. And then on page 87, about halfway down, the state programs we audited was the State Public School Fund. So that was the state program we audited. Okay, so if you go back to page 80, this first report is a, is basically on compliance as it relates to your major federal programs, the programs that I just showed you on the other page. So if you look at the first paragraph, opinion on each major federal program, it says, "We have audited, audited the Swain County Board of Education compliant, North Carolina, compliance with types of compliance requirements described in the OMB Cert Compliance Supplement and the Audit Manual for Government Auditors in North Carolina." And if you look at the second paragraph, "In our opinion, the Swain County Board of Education complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs for the year-end in June 30, 2022." In other words, we had no findings as it related to compliance over those major programs that I showed you on the other page back here. So that's the compliance section. So we also have an internal control. We evaluate internal control as it relates to your major federal programs. And if you go to page 82, and the first paragraph is about towards the bottom of the first, the first paragraph, it says, "We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance that we consider to be a material weakness." So, so as it relates to your federal programs that we audited, we had no findings as it relates to compliance or as it relates to internal control over those major federal programs. And then on page 83 is the same report, except it relates to the major state programs that we audited. And I won't, I won't reread that, but I will read the opinion. So it says, "In our opinion, the Swain County Board of Education complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major state programs for the year-end in June 30, 2022." So we had no findings as it relates to our state programs that we audited. And as, as we had on the federal programs and the internal control of our financial reporting, we have an internal control piece here that we evaluated internal control over your major state programs. "We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance that we consider to be material weaknesses." So in other words, we had no findings on compliance for major programs, and we know, had no issues with the internal control as we evaluated that as it, as it relates to your major federal programs. And if, and if you want to turn to page 80, if you want to turn to page 89, 89, 90, 91 is all your, is a schedule of expenditures of your federal and state awards. This was all your federal and state monies you received during the year. And with that, I, I don't have anything else unless you, anybody's got any questions of me. So in summary, you know, it's a very good audit. So.
Questions? Anyone? I know there's a lot of information.
Well, there's, there's a lot of information in here. And if you look at it, never having questions, Stephanie or myself could help answer them for you.
You, you spoke to the fund balance and an increase in the fund balance. And if I, if my ears are hearing correctly, that increase was somewhere in the neighborhood of $175,000 across the year. Is that correct?
Hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty.
And those, in the special revenue fund, which is the impact eight dollars, and other, there's some other monies in there, and then your general fund. Overall, your fund balance increased 209,000, but that includes your school funds.
Sure.
I was more concerned with the operating funds of the, the board. So. So, but yeah, if you look at it, if you look at it, you do have, you know, 12 months' worth of expenditures in your fund balance.
Yes.
Which is excellent. But I would also preach caution.
Sure.
Because the COVID funding at some point will run out.
Yes.
So an analysis would have to be done, how that would impact your fund balance on your general fund and your special revenue fund. And I don't know if that's happened, but that will certainly need to be taken into account. The, the federal grant fund and the state public school fund have these COVID monies, federal COVID monies coming through it. And you spent quite a bit this year.
Yes.
On those, on that funding. So at some point, I think those funds.
Yes.
Will be depleted. And, you know, an analysis of how that affects you in the future will have to be discussed.
And we're going, we're going to begin looking very seriously at that after the turn of the calendar year. Because you, you saw in our last meeting that we're looking at a deficit in the next year. And, and there are some who are calling the end of the Esser funding era as a looming cliff.
Yeah.
I, I'm choosing to look at it as a wave.
Right.
That will help propel us into the future. But we've got to be prepared for that wave to crest. And that's going to happen. How'd you like that illustration? Wasn't that good?
Yeah, that, that's what I was saying. Your fund balance looks good.
Yes.
On the surface. And you have 12 months of expenditure sitting in your fund balance. But there's also some caution there with the, these federal fundings that you're talking about with the cliff, that at some point, they're going away.
It's, it's going to happen. And, and there's another piece for us to consider also, and that is with some of the shifting in salaries that has happened in the last couple of years, and we, us being held harmless in, in different areas, and now we are not. And therefore, we're having to make up some difference. So we've got to keep that in mind, and we will. We will. Questions for Mr. Brown? Anyone?
You put this under your pillow tonight and let it soak in.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you so much, and we appreciate all that you do. And I, I think that we owe Stephanie some real gratitude to be able to bring us to a point where even in difficult times, she's able to balance the books and keep us in the black right now. Not every finance officer is doing that. And Stephanie, I know it's not just you. I know it's your team. It's everyone. But thank you, and thanks to your team so much.
I was going to mention one thing. These reports have been submitted to local government, but they are required to be approved by local government. We take this time to go ahead and present the audit report. However, until there, we get the communication from local government that they have been approved, we will have to collect those back up and save them until they're approved, and then we'll pass them back out. So if you'll just, you know, write your names on them, and we'll take them back up and then send them back out.
Thank you, Stephanie. I failed to mention that. Yeah, you can just give those to Stephanie after the meeting.
Do you need them before you leave? Okay?
She can hold on. If, if there's any changes from the local government commission, it'll be cosmetic.
Okay.
They're not going to change your numbers. So.
Thank you, Dave. Have a safe trip home tonight.
Thank you.
Stephanie, why don't you bring us our budget amendments for the month, please?
Good evening. So there's not a lot, since we just got our budget just recently, there's not a lot of activity that's happened since our last board meeting. However, we do have a few additional allotments that we received in the State Public School Fund that totaled around $490,000. We received $85,267 for CTE. And we received $21,528 for technology. We also received our safety grant of $349,734. That's for the SROs for this upcoming year, this year. And then also some additional equipment and some modifications to buildings for safety reasons. So. And then we received $38,280 for literacy. And I believe that's for the letters training, Trina, mostly?
Supplies for...
Okay, for science reading. So that's really all that occurred in the State Public School Fund. That increased our budget overall. The revised budget is now $17,641,940. For the Federal Grants Fund, we had an increase of about $21,000. That was, we have some Title I funds. They did a new PRC for Title I that we had to move $11,730 into from our Title I funds. And that was for neglected and delinquent and... And that was for neglected and delinquent and homeless for that, for that related to Title I. Also, we had to adjust some EC funding just for our carryover. Once they finalized our carryover numbers, that was about $10,000. And then the rest was just some reallocation between purpose codes and some of our COVID funding. That was just about a couple thousand dollars, just what we moved. And that is really all for our budget amendments. I don't see anybody have any questions about the budget amendments. I did provide also a budget to actual. And at some point, you know, I know y'all are doing board training tomorrow, but we'll also try to do some finance training. So I'll go more into depth on how we get these numbers. But basically, the board approves the budget at the two-digit purpose code. And our purpose code really breaks down the expenditures based on whether instructional, extracurricular, administrative, if it's alternative programs, that sort of thing. So when you see our budget amendments and you see the budget to actual, then I give that to you in the two-digit purpose code because that is the level that you approve the budget at so that you can see where we're at in relationship to the budget. But this budget to actual will give you a breakdown by fund and show you what our budget is compared to the year-to-date actual expenditures. Incumbrances would be any outstanding purchase orders that we have, and then it'll show you the remaining budget. And right now, we have used approximately about 42% of our budget, and we're five months into the year and we should be about 41%. So we're right on track. You will see a little bit more that we've used like for capital outlay because a lot of our expenditures are early in this school year. So, but if you do have any questions, feel free to call me, let me know. Any other? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. That takes us through section B. And that brings us into the NC Star plan. Are you ready to move forward with that?
I can, yes.
Okay. So if Trish Chapman would come and present Bright Adventures NC Star.
Good evening. I'm Ms. Tricia at the pre-K. A few celebrations to go over with you. So you'll notice on your Our Direction report, the comprehensive report that Ms. Terbi Phil printed for you, that there are three goals listed. Those first two are goals that we continue to achieve, but they are important and crucial to our program. The first one is about emotional states of children and teachers being attentive to helping our students learn how to regulate those emotions, name them, and then cooperate in a group of peers. And the second of those goals being about parent communication and involvement, which is another critical part of the preschool program. So we keep those there to keep ourselves on track, that we do not lose sight of how important those two things are. And a third celebration piece for us, Dr. Sutton and I have been working toward having developmental day classrooms at Bright Adventures for the first time, and we have received provisional approval for that and are awaiting our new license in the mail. So developmental day classroom means that we're able to better support our children with high learning needs in those two rooms with a lower student to teacher ratio. So we're super excited about that. And a piece of that is one of the indicators that we are focusing on moving forward. It's D 2.03, students with disabilities are provided in taught effective ways to use assistive technology as needed to support their individual learning needs. And our classrooms are fully inclusive, so we have students who are high achievers. I have one reading on like a second grade level right now, and some students who are still learning to become verbal. So we have a wide array of learning abilities happening in our classrooms. We consistently want to work on giving them what they need where they are, and part of that is providing technology where needed. For four-year-olds, that looks different. Sometimes it's a timer that's visual so that when our children are learning to regulate themselves behaviorally, they have something visual to look at to know when it's time to move forward. And it changes colors, it shows them, you know, okay, it's yellow, I need to start cleaning up now. Okay, it's green, it's time for me to move forward. And they're using things like that. They're using hand washing timers that help them with both music and visual cues to help them know how long to stand at the sink for our kids who have shortened attention spans, and all of them really. And then also, they're using technology to build things to help our children who have heightened needs, like a will of choices is one of the new things I've seen them using, where they've created a visual where the child, who may be having some issues with their regulation, and needs a way to calm down. And this empowers them to give them a choice of how they're going to calm down instead of the teacher saying, you need to take belly breath. They say, how do you think you could calm your body? And it gives them a visual ability. Another way we use technology to do that, they've built in lots of social stories where it teaches children and how to follow through a series of steps, like, and how to sit in group time appropriately. And we use pictures of that child in it, so they build the story to include that child in their own book. And they have a book that they read before the event happens so that the child's prepared for it as it happens. And then picture schedules is something else they're building with that assistive technology piece. And then the other ask, the other one is kind of looped in together, A 207 and C 102. The first one being about vocabulary, teachers including vocabulary development into all learning objectives. And the second about opportunities for teachers to share their strengths with each other, with their peers. So we kind of adjusted how our professional learning teams are being formatted so that my teachers are working in pairs and they take turns on a rotation basis, leading that PLT. They meet ahead of time, they go over what their domain is. So for example, two teachers are working on the math domain, they're pulling the objectives out of our pacing guide, saying this is what's coming up, that we saw as key indicators based on the data we saw last time of, you know, these are areas that we're not hitting achievement that we should be hitting. So they look at those. And then they also add in vocabulary that matches those objectives to be intentionally taught in the upcoming weeks so that that vocabulary is being put into all learning activities during the day, not just at storytime or at one intentional lesson. It's built in throughout. And part of that, we had already kind of looked at that indicator back in the spring, and then when our fall scores came in for objectives with teaching strategies gold, it just reiterated how important it is. And there's speculation as to why, but our language scores are much lower than they have been in the past. And these are babies that were born in 2018, 19. So if you think about where they spent their toddlerhood, it might be that less of them were in daycares because of the pandemic. And there could be a range of reasons. But last year, last fall, 22% of our students were below expectations for their age in the language domain. And this year, it's 36% are below expectations. That is a lot of children who are not using language appropriately at preschool. So it just reinforced that, yes, we do need to really be pumping in as much vocabulary and language development as we can to help get them where they need to be before they go to kindergarten. And Ms. Terbi Phil will tell you, words are so important for reading, for language, for conversation. So we're really targeting that this year, moving forward. I think I covered all the things. Did you have questions for me about any of that? I tried to talk fast, he said to make it quick.
I'll say I had you on a timer and you exceeded the expectations.
Could you put that in writing for my teachers? If you think of something later, please let me know.
Thank you, Trish, very much. Thank you. West Elementary.
And kind of going off of what Tricia just said, I'm going to apologize because I'm definitely going to be reading from what we have prepared because if you know me at all, I will go over time and I'm just not going to do that. My name is Shawna Penland, and I am a fourth grade teacher at Swain West Elementary, and I am the NC Star chairperson for the 2022-23 school year. In developing indicators for our NC Star plan this year, our team wanted to look back at previous year's data, which we did for 2019, 2020, and 2021. That's in your packet. In order to better recognize trends and to develop goals that would help us meet our students' and instructional needs as a school, we decided to bore down into the data a bit more and construct goals that would help specific grade levels. We are also keeping close track of progress monitoring and benchmarking for the school year. So the first graphs that you have there are literally from this year. They are, as the data is fresh as of Thursday, December 8th. So we're really trying to keep track and push ourselves in order to make our kids better and make our school better. In doing this, our entire NC Star team was and is aware not only of where we need to be, but we are assessing honestly and frankly the best practices that we need to use to get us there. Mrs. Sutton and I will briefly go over the goals that we selected and how our data will improve because of these goals. Four of the core strategies we intend to use to improve this data are the continued use of Swain Core, successful participation in letters training, and an all-hands-on-deck approach to not only the development of professional learning communities, which we call PLCs, but also bringing a clear focus and straightforward outlook to the multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, as a part of these meetings. First, by continuing to effectively implement Swain Core and plan effective lessons based on its tenets and standards, we will be ensuring that all lessons taught match and correspond to the North Carolina standards. Swain Core is the curriculum that the teachers helped develop for a number of years, and it's based completely on the North Carolina state standards. This area is monitored by weekly submission of lesson plans and walkthroughs conducted by Mrs. Sutton and Mr. Dunford. These walkthroughs are unobtrusive, and they give us as teachers the feedback that we really need that helps relate to the topic at hand. Secondly, Swain County Schools has provided our elementary schools with access to and availability of the letter series of professional development that has been required by the state. Letters is a professional learning experience that provides educators and administrators with deep knowledge to be literacy and language experts in the science of reading. The level of commitment and its effectiveness, along with the seamless tie-in to our English Language Arts and Swain Core curriculum, ensure that with fidelity of implementation, improvement in the student performance is assured. We have been blessed with 90 minutes of planning time per day in order to collaborate with our peers and to focus on this undertaking. Thirdly, we will continue to develop our PLC, Professional Learning Community, process. We recognize that improving our access to data and measures that matter for kids is the driving force of our curriculum. The PLC process gives us the opportunity to do just that. During our PLCs, which are held weekly, during our 90-minute planning, a time when we discuss data, develop common assessments and issues that affect that grade level. There's also an agenda back in the back there, if y'all want to look at it. As a part of this, we are also devoting one meeting per month to MTSS, that's in there too, which will allow discourse regarding the successes and gaps for each student on our specific roster, and their individual placement on the tier chart for more intensive interventions. Students are assigned interventions based on their tier in the MTSS system, and it encompasses their most pressing need. These are carried out through the regular student day as a part of the what I need or when time for a specific subject.
She is trying really hard to make that five minutes, Mr. Sale. So when you look at this, we've got lots of room to grow. As he, Mr. Sale talked earlier about the accomplishments of the high school and of East and Middle School, West is right in there. We're all digging very hard. And when you think about growing, we have a goal that we're looking at. We would like to see 10% of growth in our third through fifth grade. That's a hopeful goal. When you think about proficiency, you, that's what our growth and our proficiency go together. And I was talking to Shawna earlier, and I said, you know, proficiency of students, think about, reflect on you as an adult. How proficient are you in your day-to-day chores, in your day-to-day work? If you were to be judged on your proficiency or your growth in your job, how would you match up to Swain Schools? Because we are judged on that, and we have to look at that. Shawna found this quote, but she allowed me to read it. Relationships before rigor, grace before grades, patience before programs, and love before lessons. Meaning that is it imperative, it is imperative, that as teachers and staff members, we are not only aware of our students' progress in reading and math, but we also take the time to get to know our students. We not only know what's best for them as they learn, we know the challenges that face them when they go home. If you've ever been in education, you know, those are strong. Before we can teach and assess, we almost have to always look at that child as a human being. And in post-COVID, that was very important, but now it's even more. The trauma that our students have gone through and our staff is a real thing, and we are blessed, I think at East and West, that we have a time for social emotional learning. We have a guidance counselor and a social worker at both schools. And they go, they have classes every other week so that they address those very true needs of our student. Because if you don't feel taken care of and you don't feel safe, you can't learn. So thankfully, our school board and our central office saw the need for that time to be allotted for our schools, and we are very appreciative of that because it builds our whole student. We already see a positive, I'm going back to, I go off task a lot, so anyway. And we do see a positive impact in that in regards to our discipline data. West Elementary is a good place to learn and grow, and with these improvements in response to data, it's getting better each day. I also have, Mr. Sale referred to EVOs. I'm going to pass out to you, it goes back to 2019. My eyes work better this way, my eyes are older than Ms. Penland's, so I'm gonna. You've got a lot of data in that notebook, and I've got two people sitting behind me that helped produce that packet. Ms. Penland put in a lot of work to make those graphs for you, but it shows our direction and what our goals are. Do you have any questions for us?
Do you have any questions about the sheet that you're looking at? Anyone?
I was noticing through the, through the graphs and on the sheet, the decline in mathematics this year for fourth and fifth grade students, it seemed to be noticeable when we were looking at the rest of them. And I didn't know if we had seen a cause of that, was COVID part of that? I mean.
I think part, I, I teach fourth grade math. I feel like that part of it is because of COVID. I think that number sense is the most lacking for my kids right now, just understanding that a 10 is made up of 10 ones. If, if you can't get something as basic as place value and know that in your brain, mental math, those kinds of things, those are the areas where my kids are specifically struggling. And I think that through, we have a program called Number Talks, and we do that, start off our lesson every day with that. And you can see that, you can see the growth, it's just not where we want it to be quite yet. Because we have to be on, you know, number sense is like your concrete blocks. Everything else can go on top of it, but if you don't have number sense, it's kind of hard to get from there.
And I, I sort of threw a teacher, I hate to say I threw her in, but she had been, she'd done her student teaching in first grade, and through COVID, she did all that online in first grade. And I believe she could do fifth grade math because I believe she had my brother's brain a little bit, of which was better than mine in math. And last year was a tough year for her, but we're seeing some real positive things this year. So I think that, that red block is going to be pretty strong in the green this year. We're seeing good things through our eye-ready assessments that we're doing, which you have all that in there as well.
Cody, what we've noticed across the state is when we were not as much face-to-face, that math took a bigger hit than reading did across the state. Okay? And we're climbing out of that. Now, I don't want to use that as an excuse in any way. We still own the fact that, that we need to make improvement in our math instruction. And our principals and our teachers are working towards that with. our principals and our teachers are working towards that with significance right now. But there has been a shift in that, that we're climbing back out of.
Well, I can see that. I mean, if a child is at home, you can pick up a book and read, but everybody says, it sounds like, I'm going to do some math problems. Nobody really does that, so I can see where that.
That's a really special kid.
Yeah, I could see where that could be a problem, especially in third and fourth grade where it really starts compounding.
And I think too, one of the things for a few years, reading was dipping, and we did some really hard pushes for reading instruction and strategies for that. And I think, you know, when you uber-focused on one thing, something else slips just a little, you know, you don't want it to, but.
You can see that even in the data packet that we sent out, because for reading, there's M-Class, there's DIBLs data, there's all sorts of stuff. For math, there's I-Ready. And that's, but that's also not an excuse. We have to make those goals. Another thing I think that really hit for them, fifth grade especially, are the depth of word problems and the two and three steps, multi-step word problems, because a kid will do one and be like, I'm done. And guess what? On the EOG, on the NC check-in, that answer is there after that first question, and you've got to persevere, and that's something that we're working on.
Their stamina is lacking, you know, it's just, it's unfortunate, but we're trying to build it back.
And what Shawna just said, I believe is important for us to recognize also, a lot of our, not a lot, some of our math is based upon the ability to read as well. And so, you know, we focus to make sure that we have good reading skills, but at the same time, there's computation and there is a logical thinking that has to be exercised and grown too.
Also, in math, in fourth and fifth grade, the numbers become more abstract, where you can model them in the undergrades and third grade, but in fourth and fifth grade, it's hard to make a model of eighty-seven thousand something, something, something.
You just don't have those ten.
Whereas you can do something with the hundreds. Those little cubes are about this big, kind of eighty-seven thousand of them, and twenty-three more thousand to them. So, the numbers become more abstract, and it's like Shawna said, if you don't have the number sense when the numbers are smaller.
Yes.
Then you lose that abstract when it gets, you lose that when it gets to the abstract.
So again, we own it. We're going to improve it. We're working towards it, and I believe that we'll see an improvement. Any other questions, anyone?
I just thank you, this is great data, and a lot of work spent into it. Thank y'all for that all that.
You're welcome. I have a good team.
Which one, Ms. Ho?
There's two of them right there.
I've observed at ball games and places around, and I see her, and there's children around, she's there, they've watched her, I mean, she has such an influence on kids.
I pay them well.
You must, you must, because it shows. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you all, thank you very much, thank you. Ms. Yao, come and talk to us about the high school, please.
Hello, I'm Ms. Yao. I teach math at the high school, and I am the chair for our NC Star team. So that is why I'm here to talk to you tonight. So, the NC Star programming has twelve indicators, and we've chosen three of those to accompany our school-wide WIG, which references the PLC, Your Professional Learning Communities Continuum, Work at Continuum. So, all departments at Swain County High School will move from implementing to sustaining on indicator one, and implementing to sustaining on indicator two by the end of the school year. And I'm going to read through those as I go through my information for you tonight as to what indicator one and indicator two are. So the things that we are looking at within our NC Star indicators are A204, which is instructional teams develop standards-aligned units of instruction for each subject and grade level. We are continuing our work within our professional learning team process, and the new piece that we are working at specifically this year is we have asked each of our departments to develop common assessments for each course that can be used as both a pre-assessment and a post-assessment, so that we can look at where the kids are coming into our courses, because we are such kind of islands within each different course that we offer, because we have eight courses within each department that do this, 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 and this, and eight's not the number, it's, you know, how many ever we offer, it's a ton. And so this is a measure that is coming from our guiding coalition team as they work through the information of how do we create that data and how do we find that data? Because a lot of the programs that you hear at our elementary and middle school level don't come to the nine-twelve level. And so we're having to create those from our Swain Core material and from our materials at the state level. The second indicator that we're looking at is A401. The school implements a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instructions aligned with individual needs of students across all tiers. Again, those pre-assessments and post-assessments will be coming back to help us work within those evidence-based instructions. Students can be identified there in that pre-assessment as we look at those things to see what we need to do within our course. For me, my brain's working on the math portion of, if I don't need to cover this, it gives me more time to cover the things that they need more in depth. If they've already got ABC, I can go ahead and start working on D. And so it allows time to really give that information to those kids. It can also mean having IEP, which is our students from our EC department, their individualized education plans, that their accommodations are aligned with a learning lab or support from our EC team. We also use our CARE team, which is made up of our counselors and our social worker and admin team that are helping us to identify absenteeism issues and how we can work with those with our kids during their win period or what I need period, where we've got thirty minutes allotted every day where we can pull kids in from any realm, from the highest honors kids, AP kids, our regular standard kids, our EC kids, where we can say, okay, you're going to meet with me, you're going to meet with this teacher, that teacher, where we can allow time for that support. The last of our indicators is B103, which is our leadership team meets regularly, and we actually advocated through the calendar committee for some of the days that are within our calendar to have that PLC time where we can meet regularly and, again, look at that data, build those assessments, and create things that we know can support our kids. And through the course of the last few years where we've been working with what I need, I really think that's how we ended up with the growth that we got that Mr. Sale was sent, that our kids are seeing. So indicator one is that we are organized into collaborative teams in which members work interdependently to achieve common goals that directly impact student achievement. And our goal for that is to move to sustaining, and sustaining for that means that the collaborative team process is deeply ingrained in the school culture and becomes the engine that drives the school improvement. I think that's where we are. There are lots of bullets that have to be checked off for us to really say that we've met that by May, but I think that that's where we are with that process. Indicator two is we have identified and honored commitments that we have made to the members of our collaborative teams in order to enhance the effectiveness of our team. And again, moving to sustaining on that indicator that we are honoring those commitments. So we've provided time to collaborate, we're clear on the critical questions, our collaborative work is monitored and supported. We regularly, within those PLC days on the school calendar, meet with our admin team, and they come in and they talk to us about where we are in that process, what we're working on, and what our focus is for that meeting. Is, are, do y'all have any questions for me?
How often does the PLC team meet?
So, within the calendar for the district, there are, most of the time, two meetings per month. Some of those are full day, where we can, you know, sit down, knock out the structure of our meeting, and then work into creating assessments or creating lessons or meeting with mentee teachers. The others are half-days, and it's a lot more based on aligning the curriculum. And so, bi-monthly, and then if we get time, we meet after school as well.
Thank you.
All right, we determined, I think last year, that if we're going to truly invest ourselves in this professional learning process, which I feel like our school system has bought into quite successfully in the past little while, that we needed to honor that with effective time so that it could happen. And rather than just ask teachers to stay after school, because so many teachers have so many things that they're doing then as well, plus it cuts into their family opportunities, we built it into the calendar.
Okay.
And it's actually, it's taken away from their opportunity to have just a standard workday. There are some of those in as well, but there are expectations for meetings on these professional learning days, and you'll see those labeled on our calendar for that very reason.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Tiffany. Thank you, Sonya, very much. And Katrina is going to take you through a whirlwind of how the district is trying, we are trying to put all these pieces together in support. You've got three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. I won't promise, but I think I need to back up just a little bit and kind of explain NC Star process just a little bit, because I know we've thrown out lots of terms tonight. So NC Star is just like our plan and process, and it's given to us by the state. And so within NC Star, it's, there's a platform called Endastar, and that's where we input all our information. The reports that you have in your packet came directly from Endastar. And so, we set our goals, we look at our mission statements, our visions, and then it breaks it down into five different dimensions, and I'm going to talk about some of those as we go through. And then under each dimension, there are indicators saying, this is what you need to do to meet this dimension. And then we set our action steps to meet that indicator. So it's a tiered process, dimensioned indicator to action step. In your packet, you had a document that was labeled 2022, 23 NC Star target. At the top, it was a little bit different than the other reports, so I'm going to kind of talk about that as I go through. Again, I want to reiterate that our planning at the district level is in support of our schools, so you're going to hear a lot of the same things that you've already heard that we're doing at the district level or supporting at the district level, but we also want to extend what they're doing and set our goals so that we know what our future is, where we're heading for in the future. So our vision at the district level is to prepare every student to pursue a career and lead a balanced life. Our mission is to live the Leader in Me practices every single day. And part of the Leader in Me practice is to set a WIG, that's a wildly important goal. And so what that does is it helps you put your focus intently on whatever goal you've set for your WIG and stay out of the whirlwind. So those things that come up that are, they're urgent, but they're still not your goal, or they're required by the state, checklists and things, but they're not part of your goal, you still have to get them done, but not to get caught up in that whirlwind, but rather stay focused on your goal. And so, our district WIG is 1180, and you may have seen shirts with that on it, we had some made, what, year before last, I think it was. So our goal is by the end, by June of 2026, eighty percent of all students in Swain County Schools will achieve proficiency through the development and implementation of a guaranteed viable curriculum that is monitored and communicated to all stakeholders. Every staff and student will achieve one year's growth. That's a lofty goal, but we're working toward that. So, out of the five dimensions, our district, at the district level, we've chosen to work on four of those, to develop leadership accountability, student capacity, professional capacity, and community engagement. And so, for those indicators, we've chosen A01, which is, we're going to make sure that we're checking on our goals. That's basically what that says. We're going to be accountable for what we're doing, and we're going to check on those indicators at the school level and the district level. Then we have A05, B10, and D2. And basically, summarizing what that says is, we're going to make sure our core instruction is strong, because we've got to have a strong core instruction every single day. Every kid gets this, and then we're going to go back and fill in the gaps that they have. We want to make sure we have a clear understanding of what's being taught, the scaffolding that's needed for the mastery by the students, and the materials to do that. We've really been working toward that, making sure our teachers have exactly what they need. It's a, it's an expensive process, so it'll take us a little while to get all those things in place. Said that already. We're making sure that learning is personalized and that learning deficits are strengthened through interventions, and those grade-level mastery, those at grade-level mastery have extension opportunities. So we're not just filling in the gaps, but we're pushing our kids up. We're involving teachers in that process, so we know exactly, so they know, they can have voice in what we're doing. We're using the data, you heard lots of, you've seen lots of data tonight, you've heard us talk about different data sources. So in kindergarten through third grade, we have a program called M-Class. It's done, it's an assessment that's done one-on-one with the students. The teacher sits down with the student and assesses them in lots of different areas of reading. That's mandated by the state. We have to do that, but it gives us really great data that we can see immediately, hey, this kid needs help here. We also have I-Ready, that's in kindergarten through eighth grade for reading and math. And they talked about the deficit of data at the high school level, but we're working on that. And so this year, we have bought Common Lit for our ELA department, our English Language Arts, and we are implementing MAPS for math, and we're just getting our feet wet in that. We've had one class assessed, and we're going to do some more after, after we get back from break. So we're getting more data. We're also going to be working on strengthening our instructional coaching program, so we have some great instructional coaches at our elementary and our middle schools, and we want to strengthen that program, make sure we're giving them the support they need to go in and to help our teachers, what a resource we have there. The Leader in Me program will be revisited and revitalized. We want to make sure we've not lost any of our momentum with that through COVID and make sure that everybody's working and has that same language going. Indicator CO3 and CO4, this is addressing professional capacity, and so we want to make sure we're increasing the skills and abilities of our potential leaders. You know, we're all, should I say, we're aging, getting older, and we're not going to be here forever, and somebody's got to take our place, and we, so we want to make sure we're giving people the skills so they can step into these roles as leadership, at the building level, at the district level, even in the team level, so that, so that they have skills, that they know how to do that. So we're working toward that. Also, just recruiting new teachers. You guys that were on the board at the beginning of the year, you heard how many times we had to hire people, and we lost people because they couldn't get housing or whatever reason, and we had to hire some more people. We want to make sure we're at job fairs, allowing student teachers to come in. We'd like to promote the Teacher Assistant to Teacher program that the state has, they'll pay for them to go to college if they want to become a teacher. And we want to make sure that we are cultivating our own teachers by reinstating Future Teachers of America, Teacher Cadets, whatever you call that, and the high school, we're going to be working toward making that available, because we want, we want our kids to come back to this county and teach. We want to make sure that we are supporting our beginning teachers. I think we have a really strong program there, but even giving them more support. And then our teachers that are coming in with lateral entry, who really have had no training at college level at all, sometimes we, I mean, they come to our beginning teacher meetings, but are we going back and making sure they have those skills? but are we going back and making sure they have those skills that they need? That's, that's going to be part of my work, is to help them and support them. And then the last indicator is EO3 and it's all about community engagement and making sure that our communication is clear to all stakeholders. And one area we're going to focus on is the importance of attendance. And Mr. Sale's going to address that area right there.
Attending school is probably one of the, the greatest indicators for success in a student. And what we're seeing is, and we're not the only ones that are seeing this, but what we're seeing is more and more students who have, are missing 10% in more of their school year. And that's impacting their ability to be successful. And so last year, we looked at an attendance policy to help address that some, but there are other areas that we can work. And I believe that one of the areas is we need to communicate the vital nature of students being in school. And so as part of our communication goal, that will be a critical element. And we're not going to, I'm not going to create that, we're not going to create that ourselves. We're going to work together with the community and also with our staff to determine what would be the best way to help energize the desire to be in, in the classroom for, for school and to stay throughout the day. One of the critical areas that we're, we're concerned about and we've seen is, is students that are coming in late and then, or, or are leaving early. And it's like you're not missing anything, but instruction starts at eight o'clock and very often lasts until the bell at the end of the day. And so, that's something, as far as communication is concerned, that we need to work on. Hence, the, the parental community engagement person that I'm asking for.
So in your digital packet that you got, on that document, there are some little links underneath each one of those indicators. And it gives you a little bit more explanation of those indicators if you want to go back and read. And if you have any questions, I'm glad to sit down with you and go through any of this, any of this educational jargon that you heard tonight that you didn't understand, I'm glad to sit down and explain that to you, pull up data for you, or go over NC Star with you at any time. So just give me a ring and I'll be glad to meet with you. Any questions for me?
I know that's a lot of information and, and as I'm sitting here listening to everybody present and, and thinking about this, I believe there's a better way that we can do this next year. So that we don't sit in this meeting and have to listen and listen and listen and listen. Instead, we can do it in a different setting. But at the end of the day, there needs to be approval by the board. And that goes back into some legislation that's from years ago about school improvement plans. And so, Mr. White, if the board is comfortable tonight with approving these plans, I would ask that you consider that. However, if the board is not, if you would like some time to think about that, to look at them and ask questions, these four plans are not critical like the plan for the middle school and the East was critical to have in by a deadline. Okay? Now I'll tell you that our schools are already living by these, all right? These are living documents. And, and even though I know that it's December and coming to you, they've been living by these since September. They knew where they were going. This is just a matter of getting, fleshing it out and some, okay? So again, if you're comfortable, we would like to have them approved tonight. If not, certainly, we would like to have them approved with whatever questions and thoughts that you have by January, okay? That's totally up to you, your discretion, okay? Those are all of the discussion items that, that we needed to go through tonight and I appreciate your patience. I know that that took a little while, but those things needed to happen to get them through.
Can I ask one question real quick about, back at attendance? When you're talking about 10%, is that specific to unexcused? Or is that unexcused, is that even including like doctor visits and that kind of thing? Are you seeing a rise in that? Or are you specifically talking about unexcused absences?
Brandon, are you here? Can you answer that question?
So truancy charges come with unlawful licenses, but the impact on learning is 10%, regardless lawful or unlawful.
Okay.
Impacts. And we just attended a, the NAC conference in Chicago and they were talking about as young as third grade, that attendance was the largest predictor of high school success. As early as third, third grade, I believe, I have had my notes to go refresh that. But students that miss more than six days a year are at an increased risk of school, of impacting their school success, regardless of the reasons why they missed.
Did that answer your question? You sure?
It does for now, yeah.
Okay.
It probably gives me more questions, yeah. And that's still considered with all makeup work too. I mean, that's still the same as far as giving a child makeup work and that kind of thing.
Face-to-face instruction is critical. Being able to have the art and craft of teaching for the student on an individual basis is critical. More questions?
Any public comment? Okay, without any public comment, does any of board members feel the need to go into closed session at this time?
Yeah, I think we have to go into one.
There's one item that we need to discuss because it is communication from our legal team. And it's listed as a closed session document, the way that it's been presented to us by them. And so we need to go over that. So we'll know what of that we can release according to what you desire. You'll notice in, in your confidential agenda that the motion to go into closed session is different than it's been in the past, okay?
It is.
It's a little bit more comprehensive. And there are two reasons for that. I have learned that there's concern about what happens in closed session and so we're going to be more specific about what we're dealing with that night. And that allows for us to do that. There are nine reasons that a school board can go into closed session. And we have nine different statements that we can use for that. And so, the second reason is Chris Campbell has suggested that we start doing it this way. Be more specific about what we are going to address in closed session. That's why this statement is much more complex than it used to be.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session pursuant to GS 143.318.11 for the following purposes. Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential student information pursuant to 20 USC 1232G and GS 115C-402. Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personal information pursuant to GS 115C-319-321. And under subsection A3, to discuss matters protected by the attorney-client privilege.
Have a second?
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, by show of hands? Go on to closed session.
Mr. White, I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Shailene Hall as EC teacher assistant at Bright Adventures pre-K effective December 9, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Deborah Taylor as assistant girls basketball coach for Swain Middle School.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Elizabeth Green as EC teacher assistant at Bright Adventures pre-K effective December 1, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Shawna Pendlin as instructional coach at Swain West Elementary effective January 3, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Bowen Rance Creach as teacher at Swain West Elementary effective January 3, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second.
We can give accolades for best name.
That's a name, isn't it? That's a name.
Motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Karen Green as EC teacher assistant at Bright Adventures pre-K effective January 3, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Katie Gunter as middle school cafeteria manager effective December 13, 2022.
Motion. Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
Full disclosure, this is my daughter, but I don't have an option. I have to make recommendations and it doesn't matter who it is, okay? I don't supervise her, so it's within board policy, alright? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Lydia Sale as after-school tutor at Swain West Elementary effective November 28, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Brandy Sutton as after-school tutor at Swain West Elementary effective November 28, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Rachel Hollingsworth as after-school tutor at Swain East Elementary effective January 3, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Jennifer Thomas as after-school teacher sub at Swain East Elementary effective November 1, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Amber Griffin as after-school teacher sub at Swain West Elementary effective November 1, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve Julia Hunt as a volunteer. Hang on before you give a motion on that. Tom, are you here?
Yes.
Is that a volunteer one or volunteer two? I assume it's a two.
It's a two.
Okay, so, I don't know if y'all remember, but the difference in a volunteer one to volunteer two is volunteer twos go through background check and they have the opportunity to be alone with students and there on a regular basis. A volunteer one is not regular basis and should never be alone with students, okay? That's within board policy, alright? And so Julia Hunt is being recommended as a volunteer two, okay?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve Shirley Loftus as a volunteer two.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve Drew Hammond as a volunteer two.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve Jude Hammond as a volunteer two.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education, this is not on your list, okay? The Swain County Board of Education approve Michael Verano as head baseball coach.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the budget amendments as presented by Ms. Tredway.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the November 14, 2022 open and closed session minutes.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
Mr. White, you have a recommendation for SCC Board of Directors.
We do, Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Your Honor. I have never been called that.
Wow.
Thank you.
God, upgraded.
You elevated, you just elevated my day, bud.
Extra good chair.
I promise you, I won't hear that at home.
No, not at all, no, no, we do. Mr. Sale, nominate Jeremy Kenny.
Do we have a second on that nomination?
Second.
You'll need approval then.
All in favor, bow your hands.
I reckon, are we prepared to approve the NC STAR plans for the schools tonight that you've seen?
Is that from here till the end of this year?
Yes, and then they begin to rework them again in the fall of next year, okay? Are we good?
Yeah.
Alright, I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the NC STAR plans for Bright Adventures, the pre-K, Swain West Elementary, Swain High, and the district as a whole.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, bow your hands.
Those are all of the action items, I think. Am I right, Joanne?
Yes.
Did I miss anything? Okay, we've got calendar of events, some have already